I ' m on
You mean audio in a video?
Here we go.
Good evening, my name is Simone Ainealian and I am Ridgefield Park's elementary math instructor.
I hear the video.
Awesome. Thanks so much. That was great. Appreciate it.
That's what I, that's what I put today.
Yeah, that's what I mentioned.
These are what I was thinking. I would pick five or five was.
Well, oh. I don't think it's. Well, because there are many possible one that you could have yet. But we'll need to see. Yeah, very faint. Five six seven. It's writing. Yep. That. It. Sixty. Oh. It. We're not sure. No. 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 That's it. It's. It. Or. What? Yeah. So. And it's. Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah. Wait, that's not it. Wait, what happened? Okay. Mine. Just all. Six. What if you don't have a question? Okay, which is on the right now.
Hello? Hello? Good evening. Um, Mr. Phytros, I'd like to do a sound check.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Haynes, a sound check from you. How are you hearing us?
I'm hearing you great.
Thank you.
Just want to apologize for the delay today. Um, we were hearing from a parent and it's not every day that the board hears from a parent directly, so we were a little delayed. We will be starting shortly. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
This is, this is the Open Public Meetings Act statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies in, at which business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Ridgefield Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Bergen Record, store ledger, municipal building, Board of Education offices, and district website. Public participation instructions. Public participation will be conducted both in person and virtually through Zoom. All public will be muted throughout the meeting. Public participation comments are limited to five minutes. The public will be able to both speak and be seen by the board when participating virtually or telephonically via Zoom. Individuals participating virtually that wish to make comments during public participation will need to raise their hand by clicking the blue hand icon at the bottom of the Zoom window. Individuals participating by telephone that wish to make comments during public participation will need to hit star nine on their telephone to raise their hand. The Business Administrator Board Secretary will then unmute individuals one at a time to speak in the order that their hand was raised.
Can I have a roll call?
I'm going to take the roll. Um, Mr. Cathcart? Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraft?
Here.
Mr. Vitos?
Here.
Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Mrs. McNeil?
Here.
Mrs. Rodriguez? Mrs. Velez?
Here.
Mrs. Orth?
Here.
And President Martinez?
Here.
Others present, uh, Business Administrator Carrie Grabstein and Board Attorney David Disler. And Acting Superintendent Barry Haynes.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for?
I move that we approve. I make a motion to approve the minutes from the October nineteenth meeting.
Second.
Are there any questions on the October nineteenth minutes? Seeing none? Miss, um, Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Velez?
Yes.
Miss Orth?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes. Um, Mr. Phytros, I'd like to swear you in at this time if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Congratulations on being elected to, um, as a little ferry rep for the next, for the following year.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nicholas Phytros.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support this Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And the governments established in the United States and then, and then to this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
Nicholas Phytros.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
Am not disqualified as a voter.
Am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS nineteen colon four dash one.
Pursuant to RS nineteen colon dash one.
Four dash one.
Four dash one, sorry.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
And perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're moving on to skip. We're going to follow with communications from our student representatives.
So I said in the last meeting, we're asked to say a couple of things about our, um, experience here at RPHS. And I just wanted to talk about how there's a variety of electives that help pave the way for our future path careers. Um, for me, there's like the aviation programs that were recently installed, um, a year ago with Mr. Stefan being the teacher and a variety of sports and clubs, um, that I've been part of, uh, the Lives for Change Club, International Culture Club, Yearbook Club, DECA, Student Government and Soccer. Um, all these things have helped like implement racial awareness for Lives for Change and help with self-identity. And DECA helped me learn more about the business world as I was interested. And also wanted to talk about healthier teacher relationships. Um, I won't go into that, but I, I do want to say that the teachers here have created a really great environment for me and I've become comfortable here. And I feel like I can talk to them. And I also wanted to talk about the new Future Fridays that we've been having. And, um, I think it's really great because there's professionals from different careers around. And, um, so I went to one recently about this structural engineer and I thought it was amazing. I don't want to be a structural engineer, but it's still cool to learn about it or like. cool to learn about it or like see if I wanted to be a structural engineer. And Ashley?
Hello, I have a boring speech, so please bear with me. So my name is Asher Matoya. I have been in this school's district since kindergarten. I've been a part of student government for four years, serving as treasurer for the class of 2023, and now oversee all student government finances, specifically income we make from student government hosted events such as homecoming, talent shows, and tournaments. Additionally, I was a part of the debate team, Mardi-United Nations, DECA, the Business Academy, FBLA, and now the Early College Program. I am one of those seven students Ms. Hasseberger mentioned in the last Board of Education meeting that is expected to graduate with my associate's degree this year. Thank you. I also am a part of sideline cheer in the competition tier cheer team for the high school. I was also part of Instant Decision Day, but sadly could not make it in person. However, I received my college admission letters early and received a full RISE scholarship from FDU and smaller scholarships from other universities such as Pace and PoliShion. This odd. Thank you. This odd and formal introduction is for you to get to know me better in terms of what I do for the school. The commitment I have to my education, sports, and extracurricular activities stems from here. I am a product of Racial Park Education. If it weren't for the connections, creative lessons, and opportunity to be involved in something, I definitely could not have done it. As a student that was confused for being neurodiversion when I was just non-verbal and I had severe ADHD when I was younger, it was the teachers here that pushed me to do better. And my mom for helping me apply the tutoring lessons after school. And again, my very patient teachers. If it weren't for the encouragement from my Honors World History teacher to participate in Mardi-ven, I would not have done it because as you can tell, I'm not the best at public speaking. If it weren't for my business teacher reminding me to participate in the Remarkable Business Academy and holding my hand to make my first business idea presentation, I would not be able to do it. Our teachers spread awareness of what kids can do after school and during school. In fact, we have it everywhere in the school, on the marquee outside in the mornings. And in the morning announcements, we say the reminders of club meeting dates every week so anybody can join. In fact, the guidance counselor have an SCL sessions that teachers are encouraged to do. And usually there are ideas brought by the students for teachers to conduct after school, such as fashion club and aviation programs and I'm going blank, but there's a pun, a plenty more. And there's a lot of it over there at the comments. You can see it outside. And I think it's up to our students to really put themselves in there and that teachers do a wonderful, wonderful job of spreading awareness and creating opportunity here. So, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Gomes.
I'd like, just like saying, here you guys and talking about the Future Fridays and how you enjoyed it, even though you don't want to be an engineer. I really think that's a great idea that Guidance has done here. I think I may borrow that idea for where I work also, so I just want to state it out loud.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, you know, you forgot to add student representative to your resume and your list of accomplishments. And I wanted to empower you that it's great that you're telling us all the wonderful things that are going on in the school. We hear a lot of feedback from the public and we hear a lot of feedback from teachers. And we'd also like to get feedback from the student representatives about how we can work together to make your school experience better. Because that's really why we're here. So, thank you. We're going to move to committee reports. We have one committee report.
So the homeschool subcommittee is going to host Family Learning Night, Family Learning Night on Wednesday, January twenty-fifth from six PM to seven PM. I want to thank Mrs. Hernandez and all building principals. Also, Mrs. Wood and Mrs. Annalian for making this night possible for our family. So as of, I want to say to last week, we have over sixty-five parents and fifty students that registered. And some parents are taking advantage of the transportation from Grant School and Lincoln School to Roosevelt School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. And we're going to move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. I'm going to share my screen. Before I do that, I want to go back to Ashley and Gabby again and just say what an inspiration. Thank you both for being at the meeting, speaking about all the awesome programs that are happening at the high school and just being a great role model of student civic participation. One of the other programs that Ashley and Gabby didn't mention was Earn Your Feathers. It's a seventh and eighth grade program and it came out in the newsletter today. And that's another PBIS program. I'll leave that as just a an enticement to go read the article about Earn Your Feathers, which is another great program happening at the junior, senior high school. On the screen with me is Suzanne Hamida, who will be assisting me in this presentation. Thank you, Dr. Martinez, President Martinez, and the Board of Education for allowing me to present this mandatory presentation on Start Strong and the results. So Start Strong is assessment, it's a state assessment like the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. Yet, it's a much shorter assessment. And it doesn't give students many, it's about forty-five minutes. It's not nearly as rigorous. So I'm going to go ahead and present the Start Strong ELA and Math results. Those tests were administered in September. We just got the results recently. Going to talk a little bit about Linkit, which is our own program for linking at assessments. The PD that we gave on January twelfth. And then talk about some of the other impacts and influences we have on our assessments, including chronic absenteeism and mental health. So about Start Strong, it's really just created as a snapshot of how students progressed over the summer, really. It's trying to ascertain where students are as they begin the beginning of the school year. That's a really quick snapshot. It's not meant to replace the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, nor is it meant to replace the internal benchmarks that we have in school. It's an assessment that's given in grades four through ten for English Language Arts in fourth through eight through math, algebra, geometry, and Algebra II. Grade six, nine, and twelve, science. And as I said, it was done in September on Chromebooks. And it's aligned to the previous year's academic standards. So if you're a fourth grader, it's testing you on all the knowledge that you learned in third grade as you come in in September to start the fourth grade. So some of the results, and I'm pretty happy to report, the best thing about this is we know that our students, the majority of our students didn't have any summer learning loss. And you can see that from some of the strong showings. I put last year's end of year student learning standards for English. And again, we performed really well on grades five and six and eight and nine. There are some areas for improvement, but on those grades I wanted to focus on, we had strong showings, let's say, in grades five and six, beginning of the year. Those students are now grades six and seven. And you can see by the green lines, those students are doing great. And I wanted to talk a little bit about why or why we think in the district those students are doing so well. And you can chase it back to two to three years ago. The board made a conscientious commitment to buying a lot of classroom materials. So we expanded classroom libraries. We bought lots of books for teachers and lots of resources. I at the time made a very conscientious decision that if I had the choice between English Language Arts and math for our BSI teachers, because they were spread so thin, all the research says make sure all students can read from an early age. And that's why honestly, we're opening up the universal pre-K also to ensure that our students have some great formative years of learning, learning how to read, because all the math assessments nowadays are based on reading comprehension and fluency and critical thinking. So we prioritized ELA. We directed our BSI teachers to that. We put in a bunch of programs, including leveled learning interventions. And the board at that time, again, thank you for that, purchased a lot of great resources to help our our teachers assess students where they were and come up with instructional models. One of those programs we looked a lot, we used a lot was Linkit. And I'm going to come back to that in a second, because that's used for a screener, but also for K through twelve really on ELA, math, and science assessments. I'll talk about that in a minute. But at the same time, the board approved all those purchases, we continue to approve purchases to update a lot of our materials. On the board agenda tonight in new business, continuing these purchases are new science middle school textbooks because they were quite old and they didn't meet what's called the Next Generation Science Standards or the New Jersey Science Standards. These are much more investigative, hand-on, hands-on learning for students to get involved in. We also purchased World History, which is on the agenda tonight for our eighth and ninth grade students, replacing about twenty-year-old textbooks for some great diversity and contemporary things to study. I think, and Simone, I'm going to ask you to confirm this. I think the slideshow should play with sound.
Good evening. My name is Simone Inealian and I am Ridgefield Park.
Let me just check, is that working? Okay, anybody, some feedback?
Yes, all good.
Awesome, okay. So this is when we devoted targeted instruction to those ELA, we continue it now. And starting this year, we had more of a focus on what are we doing to improve math scores? The board again allowed us to go out, interview, hire a math intervention or a math coach specialist who works with teachers. And the two specialists you're about to see work with teachers once a month in their classrooms on ELA and math schools. And they actually pull teachers out to work with them. It's pretty exciting and they're getting some really great results.
Elementary Math Instructional Coach.
And I'm Laura Wood, Ridgefield Park's ELA Coach and Consultant.
Our world has evolved so much through advancements in technology. Reflective of that is how much the world of education has and continues to evolve. Since it is our great responsibility to best prepare our students for their futures, inclusive of careers that have not even been discovered yet, it is necessary to take intentional steps in changing the landscape of instruction in our schools.
We are working to influence first and foremost our classroom culture and environment. Classrooms are beginning to shift toward a more collaborative, social, flexible, and personalized approach to teaching, promoting higher-level thinking, inquiry-based learning, and differentiated instruction. Our means or instructional strategy for achieving this is guided reading and guided math. A structure whereby our teachers support each child's development by creating tailored small group instruction that is standards-based, rigorous, and student-centered.
Since the summer of 2022, we have been working closely to provide teachers and students alike with a rich, engaging, and adventurous take on learning. We have developed and provided monthly professional workshops for our teachers rooted in themes that reflect best practices, purchased district-wide tools and resources to build and support our students' learning agency, and continue to build bridges through outreach initiatives with the families and community we serve. Here is a sneak peek into our evolutionary classrooms. If I say, if you say, do you write? I say ah, you say ah, you write ah. All right, I say, you say, you write.
And I'm sorry, I completely forgot that the Green Team said something so interesting when they were building with cues. They said that we should use this color. I heard Toline say it, let's use this color. And I said, why? Why should we use this color? And Toline, what did you explain to your team?
I explained because it's clean, we can see it.
It's clearer when we make a good color choice in our build, so that Daniel said it's easy to see what we're doing. So I like that your team chose red for your build.
We look forward to meeting with you on February fifteenth to further discuss ongoing projects and future goals for our Ridgefield Park Elementary School.
So what you heard there was guided reading is helping a lot and teachers learning about some of these strategies, small group instruction and guided reading and some of the critical thinking that you just saw happen in the classroom. What we need to do more now is apply those great things they're doing in reading to math. Some of that happens during professional development time. And again, the board was generous in allowing us to have four interventions throughout the year. Half-day PD days that aligned to the times that teachers either got Start Strong or Linkit scores back. And the teachers have the ability to look at those, reflect with each other and their peers and the coaches that you just saw. And some of the feedback we got from January twelfth, I wanted to share this with the public because you don't always see that those days are really helpful for our teachers. They're built into the calendar to give our teachers time to take a breather, to meet with each other. And I'm not going to read these quotes, going to give you a couple of seconds to read them to yourselves, though. Those were the typical kinds of feedback narratives we got from teachers around the district on January twelfth. So moving to math, and this is where we know that we've been deficient. And we're going to apply those same skills, like I said, that we're using it in reading to math. Specifically, we know we're not doing well in math grades seven and eight. Again, this was a snapshot at the beginning of the year. It's based on last year's. But what I do want to show you, which I think is pretty exciting, is when you look at our internal Linkit scores, I want to explain this. Linkit is an internal program that we use in the district. We give three assessments throughout the year. It's a fall benchmark at the very beginning of the year, kind of like Start Strong, but it's our internal. We do a mid-year assessment. And so we did some students in December and some in January on the mid-year winter Linkit assessment, and we'll do one at the end of the year to get a snapshot of how much our students have learned. So this is the math Linkit internal assessment. And when I look at these, I'm pretty excited because this tells the story about how our interventions and our math coach and other things are doing. You can especially see it's sixth grade. And that's what we wanted to target because we know, and we've learned and talked to teachers about this. If those fourth, fifth, and sixth graders build up the math skills, they will be performing in grades seven and eight better. This is across the district, all sixth grade students. And their averages grew from the early year assessment to the mid-year assessment more than twenty-three percent, or about twenty-three percent. That's pretty phenomenal and tells us that we're on the right track. The other upcoming interventions, and I think you heard Berlinda talk about this a little bit, and also some of the students. We're starting our intervention programs for Title I and Title IV. And again, those are for students that we've identified who are in need of coming back to grade level for both reading and math and science. That'll start in January. Homework Helpline will start up on January seventeenth and run for students from six to eight. And the Family Enrichments Nights, which Mrs. Rodriguez just talked about, will start in late January. Mrs. Rodriguez is working in the K through six enrichment nights, but we will have those for seven through twelve also, and they'll be publishedized and coming up. So those are some of the good things that are happening in ELA and math as far as how we're improving students' academic achievements. I'm pretty excited about that. I'm going to turn the floor over now to Suzanne Hamida to talk about some of the other areas that we identify where we need to improve.
Thank you. As Dr. Haynes mentioned earlier, we know that non-academic issues often have academic implications. And one of those issues that we've identified is chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism is defined as missing ten percent or more of school days due to absence for any reason. So while you're here, while you will hear that there are excused and unexcused absences, at the end of the day, those are still absences where students are not in school and not learning. And we know that when students are chronically absent, they will not be able to read on grade level. You hit the next slide, please.
Oh, my apologies.
No worries. So this slide highlights a study. And it shows that children who were chronically absent in kindergarten and first grade were far less likely to read proficiently by the end of third grade. So those fundamental reading and math skills, obviously over time, the deficits are compounding. And that may be a reason why we're looking at significantly lower math and reading scores by the time the students are in late elementary and the junior high years. To discuss quickly our junior, senior high school policy, students must be in attendance for one hundred sixty-five or more school days in order to be considered to have successfully completed the instructional program. So students who are absent from class in excess of fifteen days in a full year course will require a review as per the promotion and retention policy. And it is also important to note that for every three unexcused tardies to class, that will equal to one unexcused absence. Sometimes families will ask how they can do their part. We understand that especially in the upper grades at the junior senior high school. Obviously, students are older and sometimes a little bit less easy to control. So we have some suggestions here for how families can do their part. We'll start with talking about the importance of showing up to school every day. Helping your child maintain daily routines such as finishing homework and getting a good night's sleep. This one is very important. Please try not to schedule non emergency medical appointments during the school day. If at all possible, please schedule them outside of school hours and on the weekends. Keep your child healthy. Encourage your child to join meaningful after school activities, including sports and clubs. And seek help from school staff and or community agencies if you need support. And we will discuss some of those supports on the next slide. So mental health, as we know, is involved in everything we do. Our academic career and personal well beings. For our students, they're all aligned. They're all intertwined. So for our students, we have a number of supports in place, both in our schools and in the greater community. So as Ashley, one of our students mentioned earlier, we do have SEL sessions starting back up again this month. And there is a bulletin board in the commons that you can take a look at. Some of the program offerings include watercolor painting, book club and swap, social justice issues, boxing basics, yoga, and self care. We also have the Mental Health Awareness Club, which is led by one of our social workers, Ms. Codrich. The meetings are held during the first week of every month in room one thirty, right after school. And there are reminders for students in the morning announcements and flyers near the restrooms. And we also have our support staff, including social workers and school counselors. And lastly, I just wanted to provide some information on community mental health agencies. Sometimes parents feel that they're at their wits end and they're not exactly sure where to start to get mental health support for their children. So these are four of the most popular mental health agencies in our area. Care Plus Comprehensive Behavioral Healthcare, also known as CBH Care. West Bergen Mental Healthcare and the Vantage Health System. And you'll see the phone numbers and websites are also included here. And that is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hamida.
You're welcome.
So back to again, publicizing some of the great community events we have coming up. Family Learning Night, January twenty fifth, and we have a test pep rally to be held in early April. And so to recap the presentation, there are still some additional slides. And when I post this online, you'll see there are additional slides that go into more detail on some of the student performances. But we reviewed the start strong ELA and math results, talked about how Lincoln is really helping us in the district better with form A, B, and C. Professional development was a hit and really helped a lot of our teachers on January twelfth. And Miss Hamida covered chronic absenteeism and mental health supports. So that I can continue this type of work in an academic environment and work more with our coaches and our teachers and academic performance. As of tonight, I will be stepping down as the acting superintendent and moving back into my role as the director of curriculum, instruction, and assessment at the board's earliest convenience. Thank you so much. And President.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to excuse, it's nine o'clock, so I'd like to excuse our student representatives. Thank you very much. And don't forget to talk to your peers and make sure you come back and tell us what you guys need to have a better school environment. Thank you. I just wanted to, before I introduce a couple of resolutions into the record, I just wanted to thank Dr. Haynes for his service to the district. Without going into too much detail, Dr. Haynes came into the district at the request of the board. It was a job that was not very difficult in a very divided district. And I wanted to thank him for his, for his service. Many things have been said here. He has often been the target and you have heard me stand up for what I think is just. Which is that if somebody's in a power, in a position of power, they have to hear the heat. But I also think that we have to be vigilant and also take responsibility for how far our district has gone over the past fifteen years, not just the past fifteen months. And so with that, I would like to thank Dr. Haynes for your service. And thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martinez.
With that, I'd like to read, I'd like to make a motion to read a resolution. Be it resolved that Superintendent Angela Bender hereby is recalled from administrative leave effective January twenty third, twenty twenty three. Be it, be it further resolved that the board authorizes the board president, the board secretary, and or the board attorney to take all action necessary to effectuate the terms of this resolution. Can I have a second?
A second. I'd like to take a roll call. Mr. Coney?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros has to abstain, as does Mr. Gomes. Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Valles?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
I, I'd like to make a brief statement about that resolution which passed. The board has been mulling over this for several weeks now. Some of it's much more longer than that. I can assure you that the board deliberated. My, my phone bills will, will show that the board really took a good look at this to see if this was the best thing for the district at this time. This should not be viewed as retaliation. It should not be viewed as anything more than what it is, which is a very thoughtful board doing its best to do its best for the district moving forward. And with that, I would like to read a second resolution. Whereas superintendent's contract expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. And whereas the board believes that an exhaustive search for the most qualified candidate is in the best interest of the district and now for be it resolved that the board hereby authorizes the board secretary, board president, and board attorney to take all steps necessary to begin formal search for a new superintendent as of the expiration of the next.
I second. I'm going to take the roll call. Mr. Coney?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Valles?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
There's a sheet in the back. Have we signed in for comments on agenda items? Please, Ms. Rodriguez, please read the guidelines.
Good evening. Before we begin public comments as a chief, excuse me. As a trustee, I want to remind everyone that we believe it is crucial to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. The board is here to listen. However, the public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, the board may respond to easier questions tonight or may not respond to questions tonight depending on the level of research needed to answer the question. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to proceed and research issues. If need be. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, the board is unable to respond to comments related to school personnel or students or those that involve pending litigation. Please know however, that we take personnel and student concerns very seriously on these matters. We would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels such as your school principal, the administrator in charge or of the department or the superintendent. We want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with excuse me, controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience address their comments to the board president directly rather than the, than the audience. Finally, I want to remind everyone that the board administration is reachable by email listed on the website. For tonight's meeting, there will be two public comment sessions, one on agenda and one off agenda items. There is a sign up sheet on the podium. We'll call your name in the order you have signed in. Each member of the public will have five minutes to speak during each common period. The public common period will be one hour for on agenda items and one hour, one hour for non agenda items. The board is now entertaining, will now entertain public comment. Please remember to state your name, Ridgefield Park mailing address, and to keep your concerns, your comments brief to allow the sufficient time for other members of the public to speak if they wish. Thank you for your cooperation and support.
Christina Ramos, please.
Hello. Christina Ramos, three eight two Tinek Road. Good evening. I wasn't expecting so much information so quickly, but at the same time, I'm confused. Thank you. Number one, I think, Ms. Won't you go? Okay, she left. Dr. Bender. It was a long time coming and I'm glad that she's being reinstated. However, I'm confused by your last, your second resolution as far as looking for a new superintendent when her contract ends on June thirtieth. I know this is a hot topic and I'm hoping that you can give us more clarity as we've been waiting for such a long time to hear this news. And would like more feedback on it. Please.
Is it, this borders on personnel issue? So I can speak to up to June. But there is pending litigation which prevents me from speaking about after June.
Oh, I see. Okay. So this is basically a formality that because her contract ends at the end of June. And there's still other, I don't want to say balls in the air, you, you all, we all have to go through the process. Doesn't necessarily mean that we're getting rid of her come June thirtieth.
The board's going to go through a full superintendent search.
Okay.
And all individuals are welcome to apply who are qualified.
Would she be a candidate?
She's welcome to apply. Yes.
Okay. Just to say a few words in respect of that, I respect your decision. I thank your decision for reinstating her. I think it was necessary to do because we had it through a really bad path. And I'm hoping this will turn things around and would also give her the opportunity to prove herself even more than what she did when she first started. She was robbed from that opportunity. Cause she wasn't able to stay here longer. But I think in the short time that she was here, she did prove herself and she did a lot of things in a short amount of time that many other previous administrators couldn't do in several years. So I'm hoping that in, in light of what happened to her and the unfair treatment that she was, she was giving that she would take top priority. And I'm glad that she'll have these next few months that I'm sure and confident that she will continue to do an amazing job, that she will be giving. You know, a chance to continue that. Instead of looking for another superintendent, if we have one already that is doing a fabulous job. But thank you. We'll move forward. I had a question on something on the on agenda for the HIB incident. I'm not asking for any information or going to say any names. But I was curious to know when these incidents are presented to you, the board. Do you get the full information of the cases? The individual has brought to the attention of the district? Or is it a formality that it goes on the agenda, but you really don't know the backstory of everything happening?
Speak for the board. We, we do get details. We don't get, we typically don't get names. Or details that would identify individuals. And the board's role in that process, as I understand it, is for us to determine whether it was an HIB event or not. Does it, does it meet the criteria? The board also on occasion hears what was actually, what the administration actually did to deal with the actual issue at hand.
So do you get the full detail and disclosure of what's happened?
I mean, it depends who you ask, right? We, we get the information from the administration. On occasion, we get to speak to a parent, but the board does not conduct investigations.
If, if the parent disagrees with the decision made with the administration, the parent does have the opportunity to appeal in which the board would hear the detailed story.
Oh, and then, okay. Okay. So when, let's say you're in a room and a parent's there, you don't necessarily know any information at that point. You're just pretty much in the dark until it resolves through.
I'm, I'm happy to. So there's a process with HIB. The board actually, H, every HIB goes before the board two times. There's what they get it, an initial hearing of it. And then a secondary to affirm deny reject it. That's what's brought before the public. By law, the board is given information about the HIB, but it's an abbreviated version. So they don't get specific student names. They don't get the entire complaint and they don't get all of the details. They get enough information that the board understands what took place and can make a determination whether it occurred or not. But by law, they don't get everything.
Do you get that information? As a lawyer? Are you privy of all the information?
It, it depends. It depends on if the district reaches outright. So I'm allowed to give legal advice on specific matters. And so if the district HIB comes to us, they give what information is necessary. But again, a lot of it is attorney client privilege. And I'm just trying to give you generally not just this board, but all boards across the state get a specific amount of information.
Now, I'm just curious of how those things are handled because you know, some certain things, serious things are going on. And I'm not sure if everything is being communicated correctly amongst everybody. Am I out of time? Sorry. Thank you.
It was awesome. Tayshaun Sadler, please.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, so wasn't quite expecting the information we just received. But I, I would like to state that it is refreshing to have a board for the folks that I actually trust to act in good faith and to make decisions in the best interest of our community. So you know, thank you. I look forward to seeing where we go from here. And I did have a, a statement prepared that actually speaks a lot to the resolution, actually. So Dr. Martinez. Historically, the field of education has been dominated by women in a patriarchal society that routinely devalues women's worth and work. Although they have clearly been at the forefront of the field of education, women have been grossly underrepresented in leadership. There have been disproportionately less women appointed as superintendents, principals, or presidents on school boards. And when against all odds, women do secure these positions, they are routinely treated unfairly and not afforded the same respect, support, or agency over their work that their male counterparts enjoy. The woman dominated profession of teaching has itself been undervalued as teachers have been notoriously underpaid in this patriarchal society. I don't believe that our school district has been immune to the ills of patriarchy and sexism. I once stood here and characterized our previous board as an old boys' club. Because that's what exact, that's exactly what it felt like to me at the time. I wasn't the only one who felt that way. And I believe that's one of the reasons why many in our community elected new leadership here. With the past two board elections, I feel like our community has made some very significant strides in the right direction. Over the past few years, we have both retained and gained some phenomenal woman leaders here in our school district. To the phenomenal women leading our school district, thank you for all that you do and for all that you are. Thank you. You are very much appreciated and I see you. I also want to make mention of Dr. Angela Bender and Ms. Diane. I also want to make mention of Dr. Angela Bender and Ms. Diane Thieman. It appears to me that they represent examples of how patriarchy and sexism not only hurts individual women, but also our community as a whole. An injustice to one of us is truly an injustice to all of us. My hope and my commitment is that our district can find a restorative solution to address the injustices that appears to me, both of these women and subsequently our entire learning community as a whole have been subjected to. What hurts one of us hurts us all. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Also wanted to be known that we will not stand for any patriarchal sexist targeting of any of our hardworking women in this district, whether in leadership, rank and file employees, students, or directed towards parents and any other community members. We will be watching very closely, and we will use every legal, ethical, moral, and peaceful means at our disposal to protect our own. In doing so, we protect our learning community as a whole. We protect us. Patriarchy and sexism will never be tolerated and have no home here. I wanted to give a special shout out also to our business administrator, Ms. Carrie Graffstein. We appreciate you, and we're watching closely everything that's being done. And also wanted to just briefly thank, oh, my time is up? Okay, I don't know. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to, once again, thank you all for everything you're doing. I know I'm still trying to understand what just happened and what will happen going forward. But the one thing that I do have faith in is that we have people who are acting with integrity sitting in those seats, and I thank you for that, and I look forward to, you know, what comes next. Thank you.
Ms. Khalib?
Hi, this is Khalib, four sixty-four A Liberty Street, apartment one oh two, Little Ferry. Hi, four sixty-four A Liberty Street, apartment one oh two, Little Ferry. Can you hear me? Okay. First of all, I'm just glad to see that this whole situation with the acting superintendent and Dr. Bender that has been hanging over the district for a while has come to a peaceful resolution. I hope we can move forward with Little Ferry and Ridgefield Park being aligned again, and, you know, thank you to your board for, you know, being patient and sorting things out. And I wish both Dr. Bender and Mr. Haynes good luck in their new positions and whatever the future holds for them. I actually had an on agenda question. There was an item on the agenda under new business about a grant for more windows for the high school. I thought that was all done. An ARLOC grant.
There is, there is an item on the agenda for a ROD grant. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
That's a grant for regular operating districts for capital projects. And there is another phase of the high school windows that needs to be completed. And the advantage of applying for that grant is that we fund 60% of the project and the state will fund 40% of the project. So those are some of the projects that we plan on applying for through the ROD grants.
Okay, they sound good, especially the air conditioning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khalib. Mr. Santos?
Susan DeSantis, fifteen Homestead Place. It was nice to see the presentation what Dr. Bender created and budgeted for has finally come to fruition. Also, I think the names of the students shouldn't have been displayed. Resolution ten, ten oh one. It's nice to see finally, after two years, this was budgeted for and it's coming to fruition. Resolution eleven. About the board, it's nice to have a board that you can support. Thirteen oh three resignation. This resignation makes fifty-six employees that have been gone since Dr. Bender was suspended. And today's resignation and walkout was makes it fifty-seven. So it's, it's nice to see that she's been reinstated. But my question is, is the board going to try to settle the lawsuit?
The board just cannot comment on pending litigation.
So you're not going to say whether you're going to attempt to settle the lawsuit and bring her back? I mean, you know, you're going to do a superintendent search, and that's just wasting more money. And if you don't try to settle the lawsuit, we're just ongoing with litigation and costs. And you know that the community wants it settled, and you want her, we want her as the superintendent, not just till June. Okay, that's it. Her on agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Ms. Malou?
Janet Malou, one sixty-three East Grand. Starting out with the presentation of scores. I do have some questions, which I know will probably not be answered tonight, but I just want to throw them out food for thought. Are those scores scaled scores? Are they based on scaled scores? Because what I know I've seen in my own experience where we had a very high percentage one year of children that were below proficiency. In the following year, we maybe had a third of that. And then as the school year went on, we were wondering why these kids were so far behind. And we looked at the history, we realized that the state went ahead and changed the scaling. So it wasn't a true picture of what they could do. So I guess part of me is really hoping that some of those seventh and eighth grades was especially the eighth grade where we had less than 5% proficiency. To me, that sounds, I'm going to say impossible. So I do question that. The other question I have is, what are the sizes of those classrooms? Maybe the part of the answer is to have less children in a math classroom where you can truly individualize more. A lot of times, that's a piece of the answer. I know districts don't like to hear it because it means maybe hiring new staff or finding room for those classrooms. But I know I keep hearing, believe it or not, from fifth grade parents who are looking for tutors, and they know I was in contact with one of them. And I said, well, this should bring home, everything's on the computer now. So that too impacts what they can and cannot do. There are a lot of kids that, you know, you do a question, you do a question, but they need to go back and look at one of the earlier questions. And they don't have that with computerization. So I may be old school, but I don't think it gives a true picture of what kids are capable of. So that's just something, that's my own pet peeve. On the other note, I'm glad to see that the board has decided to put Dr. Bender back in place as superintendent and, you know, put Dr. Haynes back where he, what he was hired for and let him prove himself there. Because as I said all along, you can't do two jobs and do it well. So I'm glad that move was made. However, I'm going to put it this way. You've all, I assume, have served on committees, boards, et cetera. What can you get done in six months? Nothing. Okay, so putting her back in when you took away two years or whatever, where she was proving herself. And it is true, a lot of the programs that we're seeing in place was her doing. And she needs to be able to have that credit due her. So now we're putting her back in for the remainder of her contract. But I personally think being that time was stolen from her, the right decision would be to offer her an extension, even if it's a one-year extension. And that would give you time to maybe, then if you feel that after a year and a half, you'd still want to do a superintendent search, then go for it, and she has the right to put her name in. But to expect her in giving her not even six months, I don't think that's fair. So that's just, you know, some food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malou. Mr. Rafferty?
Good evening, President Martinez. I'd like to just take one minute and thank the board for taking the first step, not the people, the board. It was imperative that everybody understood, especially our new people coming in, what the situation was before they made a decision. And having the special meeting they had that enabled everybody to get up to snuff with good information, and they made a good decision. That's the way it works. It's no different than the plan, okay? It's exactly what it is, good information and a plan. I would like all of the people of Ridgefield Park to take a minute, give the board some time to do what they have to do, let them work on the major problems, and then we'll go from there. Simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rafferty. Do we have anybody to elevate who's online? Is the portal open? Move on to resolutions. Ms. Kraft, can you please move Faculty and Programs?
I'd like to move F nine oh one to F nine oh five. Second. Are there any questions on FB nine oh one to FB nine oh five? Seeing none. Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes, to all, but I abstain on FP nine oh two.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Can I have some, can I have Mr. Cooney move Buildings and Grounds?
Resolutions BG ten point zero one through ten point zero two, ISO move.
Second. Are there any questions on BG ten point oh one to BG ten point oh two?
I just like to make a comment on ten oh one, that I'm very happy that that's going to happen. The board has been working on that for a very long time. I know the BA in the Buildings and Grounds Department has been working on that, and I'm very happy. It's going to be a big deal. In case you didn't read it, it's Science Rooms renovations and our culinary arts renovations.
Okay. Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Ms. McNeil, could you move consent agenda? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I checked it first. Sorry. Mr. Gomes, can you please move Finance Insurance?
ISO move FY eleven oh one to eleven fifteen. I'll second.
I'll second.
Are there any questions on FI eleven point oh one to FI eleven point fourteen? Seeing none? Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes, to all, but I abstain on FI eleven point oh one.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Trustee McNeil, can you move consent agenda?
I move consent, resolutions twelve point oh one through twelve point twelve.
A second.
Are there any questions on consent agenda twelve point oh one to twelve point twelve? Seeing none? Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Trustee Orth, can you move Personnel, please?
I move Personnel Items thirteen oh one to thirteen oh nine.
A second.
Are there any questions on P thirteen oh one to P thirteen oh nine? Seeing none? Mrs. Orth?
I'm sorry. I did have one question that I don't think I got the answer to on thirteen oh six about whether or not a substitute teacher can be in charge of a program?
We are in the
on thirteen oh six.
I think we're going to have to pause on that. If you want to table it, we can.
Or just amend it to remove Elias Silva from this resolution so that we can come back to that and pass the other two?
So the motion you're making is?
I'm making a motion to amend thirteen oh six to remove Elias Silva from the from the resolution.
I have a question. When does this program begin? I don't, I don't.
I don't know. That's why I think just to amend, to take him off is the action that we should take. I asked the question as to whether or not a substitute can act in the capacity of being a I forget what it's called. Is he there, though, in case teacher gets approved above him? Is not there?
So is it a substitute teacher to the pro? Or is this, or is this a substitute teacher for the district? And
I'm not sure we're going to get answers right now, given our current we can move to table that, to amend it to take that individual's name off, and we can return it next month. It looks like the program is still going to be able to run with two other individuals. Your motion is to amend it.
Yeah, that was the motion I made, so I guess we need a second for that. Yeah, that was the motion I made, so I guess we need a second for that.
I'll second it.
Okay, so I want to take a roll call on amending Resolution 13.06 to remove the substitute teacher, Elias Silva. Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
A question. What exactly is Scarlet Studio Next Chapter Program?
A special needs.
It's special needs. So these are teachers' aides? Teachers' assistants? No.
Ms. Velez?
Yes, for the amendment.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment passes. Okay, now I'm going to take a roll call on 13.01 to 13.09 excluding 13.06. Okay. So 13.01 to 13.09 and 13.06 as amended. Okay. Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
We're going to move to Citizens Comments Off Agenda Items? If I can please have the list from the back of the room? Did anybody sign up? Apologies, we do have some people signed up. Mr. Sadler?
Hello again. J. Sean Sadler, 139 over Peck Avenue. A quick statement. Although he's been here for a little while, I would like to formally welcome Mr. Tom. I hope he's listening. I don't know if he is. Mr. Thomas Egan of Richfield Park. I'm not sure if he remembers me, but I spoke to him briefly after a meeting here on January 4th. My good friend Christina Ramos, myself, and our neighbor Sharon approached him to ask some questions and express some concerns. While I appreciated the few moments Mr. Egan afforded us at this time, the questions and concerns we raised then remain unanswered. Namely, I would like to know how his position, excuse me, I would like to know his position on the status of and plan for Ms. Steeman here in our school district, the plan for any pre-K program going forward? What specific role, if any, he sees Little Ferry playing in that program? And his rationale for whatever positions or actions he plans to take on these matters? I'm also particularly interested in the plan Mr. Egan conveyed, but has yet to follow up on during his initial introduction to our community, when he expressed his intention to provide a community forum within which we could formally engage him in regarding our questions and concerns, as well as hear his plan for working with our school district. This community believes in working collaboratively with those who are entrusted to represent our interests, rather than being unilaterally ruled by any entity. We warmly welcome any and all collaborative help, but we will resoundingly reject anyone's unilateral rule, particularly from an outsider. Perhaps I'm mistaking, I hope so, but it has come to my attention that Mr. Egan has presented to the town of Little Ferry regarding the Richfield Park pre-K program currently under consideration. If this is true, it is deeply disappointing, confusing, and concerning to me that a state monitor assigned to Richfield Park would present to another community on a Richfield Park program, but still not do so to the people of Richfield Park themselves. I would very much like Mr. Egan to clarify what is going on so that I and all the people of this village can have a better understanding. Mr. Egan has previously stated to us that he is not interested in our school district's past, but only in looking forward. Respectfully, I believe this is not a wise position to take. Those who are ignorant of the past are doomed to repeat its mistakes. I hope my intuition is wrong, but taking such a position implies that Mr. Egan has no interest in serving our school district with the spirit of collaboration, which we would be most graciously happy to accept. It suggests, rather, that he may view himself as an official who has come to our village to unilaterally exert his rule over us, a position which we will vociferously reject. We will use every legal, moral, and peaceful means at our disposal to reject any attempt by Mr. Egan to rule over rather than collaborate with us. Our community deserves answers to questions and concerns which I'm raising now, and I'm expecting that we will get them rather than official silence. Silence in itself is a form of communication. We expect the officials serving us in a democratic society to be accountable to us, to answer our reasonable inquiries. I will take silence for Mr. Egan as an expression of dismissive disrespect. The community in general, which he has been charged to serve in a very specific and limited fiduciary capacity as outlined by Mr. Egan's supervisor, Henry Scott, with whom we have already been in contact, we deserve answers. Therefore, I'm respectfully insisting on behalf of my children, on behalf of my friends and neighbors, that Mr. Egan give us our due respect as parents, as taxpayers, as voters, and as human beings in what is alleged to be a democratic society. With all due respect to Mr. Egan, no one here voted for him, no one here interviewed or decided to hire him, and respectfully, we expect him to stay in his lane as a guest in our community, serving a limited role in collaboration with the elected officials we have entrusted with our collective interests concerning this school district. The people of Richfield Park have particularly put our trust in the trustees who sit on our board. We expect that Mr. Egan will keep this in mind as he works collaboratively with them to serve our interests. If he does these things, we will get along just fine. If not, then to paraphrase a saying employed by many of our young folks these days, "Mess around and find out." We will use every single legal, ethical, moral, and peaceful means at our disposal to oppose him and to hold him fully accountable. Mr. Egan, this is a second welcome to you. Allow us to reintroduce ourselves. We're the people of Richfield Park. And we don't play. We take our children's education very seriously. And if you don't know, now you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Ramos? Ms. Ramos?
How do I follow up on that speech? So I wanted to readdress the pre-K as we haven't received any information. From what I'm hearing, Mr. Egan has had knee surgery. If... Has any proposal been brought up to the board as of yet regarding this proposal with the shared services with Little Ferry?
If not.
So Mr. Egan, I'm pretty sure was aware of his knee giving out and needing surgery, but yet he moved forward with the proposal of removing the assistant director from our pre-K program, going to Little Ferry and sharing a presentation with them, but yet has left the people of Richfield Park, the district that he was sent to work for, still in the air of what is happening with our program. That says a lot. And I hope that the community starts showing up to the meetings and applying pressure to the superintendent, continue to write letters to Scott Henry. I will post his email address again. Him and I have become very good friends. Not really. I'm sure he loves to see my name show up in his email. But yes, I don't think Mr. Henry is being informed of everything that's correctly given by his emails that I receive. It seems like he's being told one thing, but the thing demonstrated here by Mr. Egan is another. So that, to me, is very concerning. And as of now, I don't know where the pre-K stands, and I don't think anybody knows. Does anybody have any insight? I mean, just a month ago, I want to say or so, Mr. Haynes was trying to hire a grant writer for 130K, and now we have suddenly financial costs to cut back on. So I really don't understand where this is going. Does anybody have any idea? I mean, I don't blame that you don't, because I'm sure you weren't given it, but I'm just formally asking so everybody else knows.
What I can say is the board is aware that there's a problem there, and it's a high priority. It was one of our directives, the pre-K program, and so it is clearly on our radar.
Okay, and I would suggest and welcome you also also become good friends with Mr. Scott Henry. Maybe if he hears from everybody on the board, that would also set off another alarm that it's just not the crazy Christina Nicola Racus Ramos emailing him again, and he'll maybe take further steps into looking into it even further. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying the pronunciation of your name as well. Ms. Zantis?
Okay. Where to start? On the resolutions about public speaking on the website, each member of the public will have five minutes to speak. Down through the public comment period will be one error for on and off agenda items. That was crossed out. My assumption was you're changing the policy to let the community speak without timers?
I didn't cross anything out. I'm not aware of what you're referring to. For policy to be changed, it would have to be spoken about with the Policy Committee and then put before the full board for a first reading and second reading. I'm not aware of any policy change to that.
Okay, well, if you look on the site, those lines along the top are crossed out. So I was hoping that the board has taken the sensible approach to change that policy for the community. The state monitor, I assume, is having any operation?
He is out sick.
Well, this is the second time he's been absent, and Mr. Demakropis never missed a meeting in six and a half years. And this man is here half-time. And I hear he's not being nice to a lot of people in this district that are very important, and we don't need any more people leaving. I'd like to know how the district is going to transfer a pre-K program that Richfield Park got a grant for. It was approved for Richfield Park. It belongs to Richfield Park. How are you transferring an approval from the state for a Richfield Park program to Little Ferry?
I think the current board is committed to having the Richfield Park co-op, the Richfield Park pre-K program be a Richfield Park program. I have not seen a resolution suggesting that we give away our program to another district.
Okay, after the last meeting, Mr. Egan said that he's creating a BSI supervisor's position that he's giving to Ms. Steeman. I'd like to know how he's... He's already created a BSI position that wasn't advertised, that wasn't posted. He's put him in a position, and now he's going to create another one and not post it and advertise it? Is the board aware of that?
We defer to Mr. Egan on his actions as the state monitor.
That's convenient.
Clarification, by deferred doesn't mean I'm okay with it. I mean that this is his action. He should answer it when he gets back.
Well, it seems that Mr. Egan is overstepping his bounds and areas, and he's limited, from everything I've read, to things that have to do with financial decisions, not presentations of pre-K programs in another district, which is the superintendent's job in cooperation with the board and board members that want to be present. And this isn't looking good. And the rumors out there about the connections are, they're not good. I hope you're all aware. Okay.
Ms. Zantis? Ms. Malou?
Janet Malou, 163 East Grand Ave. Yeah, I had some questions regarding this pre-K program also. Is there even anyone in charge of it right now? Like, who's fielding questions on the grants, et cetera? That doesn't, in my mind, go well with the state. If the state has given us this enormous grant and we don't have anybody actually handling it, that doesn't say a lot for us. And as far as Mr. Egan is concerned, Egan, right, monitor? I do believe he's overstepping his bounds. He made very clear the first night that his main concern was financial stability of the community. So where does he get off basically taking an educator who was doing the job well out of a position? To me, he had no business and no right to remove somebody that was in place in that kind of a position. And I don't trust where he's going. And I, too, have been pen-palling the state, the head of the Director of Monitor. And there are a lot of other people that are, and I will say, we are going to start a letter campaign moving up the ladder. And if it has to go to Murphy, it'll go to Murphy. But he does not belong in this district. From what I've seen in the short time he's here, he has created chaos. And I really feel sorry for you guys that have to deal with him closer than we do. But the only advice I could give you is beware. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rafferty?
Thank you, President Martinez. We can present all the spreadsheets, et cetera, we want at Board Ed meetings, but the fact is our children are failing. Since Dr. Haynes was put in approximately a year and a half, two years ago, we have lost 23 teachers, 30 assistants, and four staff members. Every time a teacher leaves, there's another one on the agenda tonight. And supervisor that turned in a resignation today. Our children lose because they go back to square one. I urge Dr. Bender in her return. She doesn't even have to do it. She actually breeds it. The right atmosphere in our school system, because it is certainly a team job, along with the board, the parents, all of the teachers, the superintendent, and that's the first thing we must address. You can bring in all the programs you want. Right now, we are bleeding. 23, 30. Close to 60 people have left our school districts since Dr. Haynes has been in. That is the first thing that has got to be fixed. As far as Dr. Bender being... As far as Dr. Bender being returned. Maybe no one understands more than they. You cannot talk about it. There is nothing you can do. You can't talk about an extension. You can't talk about a contract because everything's in litigation. You are taking every possible step you can take right now. And for that, I commend you for the, for reason, it is what's best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rafferty. Anyone online who's, wants to be promoted? Nobody. That hurts. Mr. DeSantis? Yes, and then we'll close it, then we'll close it out.
I didn't sign the paper, but thank you. Um. I'm not going to reiterate some of the things that Mrs. Ramos and Janet Malu said because uh. I understand with the preschool, you know, our feelings, you know, we wanted to be our program, what's going to happen with the grant money? So I put those aside and not be repetitive if I can. The first thing, um, and this has been sincerely. Um, you can feel the difference in the atmosphere at board meetings. I have to thank Dr. Martinez and all the other board members for making this a very different experience. That has been over the last fifteen or eighteen months. So thank you all. Um, sorry, as far as Dr. Bender goes. I feel it was a great decision considering where the district is at now. I also understand there's a lot of loose ends and a litigation. And there's, that's all going to be worked out one step at a time. And I understand. Why that is not resolved this tonight. I'm surprised this got resolved tonight. So um, I want to wish the board luck in those negotiations. I want to wish Dr. Bender congratulations and. Good luck in those negotiations and only we doing a superintendent search. It's hard to say who the best superintendent is, but you won't find anybody better. And uh, just thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. DeSantis. Like us to move us to uh new business?
Um, Dr. Martinez, can I just say one thing before you could move to new business? If I may? So I just wanted to say one thing about the preschool if I could, if I can just make a comment. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
So just uh for, just a little bit of transparency and just some clarity. So at the Little Ferry Board meeting, uh, a little less than two weeks ago. Yes, the state monitor came and addressed Little Ferry Board of Education about a pre-K program. I just want to be clear that the Little Ferry District has had a pre-K program since two thousand and five. Alright, so for the last seventeen years, Little Ferry's had a pre-K program. And it was free from two thousand and five until two thousand and twelve. And then in two thousand and twelve. Due to some funding issues from the state, we had to start charging from two thousand and twelve on some bit of money to. For the program to keep going. So, but we've had a program for seventeen years. If anybody has any questions, they can reach out to our superintendent. And during that meeting, when this, when the state monitor came to address our district. The board members, all nine of us did collectively, did tell the state monitor that. We had no interest in doing anything at all. Unless we had complete transparency with the Richfield Park Board. And we were on the same page with the Richfield Park Board that we didn't want to have any involvement. Unless we're on the same page and we didn't want to have any other additional issues. And they want to have any other problems. And more than move forward if we're going to do anything whatsoever that we wanted to have complete transparency and have everybody on the same page. And that's what we had said. We have not had any votes, any other additional conversations. That was our comments back and we said that if Richfield Park wanted to have a conversation. Or talk any collectively, if the boards wanted them to have a conversation or a meeting. That the state monitor wanted to broker something or have something between the districts that we could have a conversation. Nobody ever got back to us. We haven't heard anything since. That was the conversation. We had not solicited to have this brought to Little Ferry. We're not looking to partner with no disrespect to anybody involved. All we said was is, we have a program, we're running our program. This was brought to us. We're not looking to take any, we're not looking to take anybody's program, take anybody's money. What we did say was is if you're looking to partner with us, we want complete transparency, make sure everybody's on the same page. We're not looking to start any infighting between the districts, any more issues that we already have between us. We don't want any other things to be brought between us to make any other, any other problems. We have not heard from the state monitor. We have not had any other conversations, have we, Dr. Martinez? Have we had any conversations?
Well, if I could just confirm, we, we did have one conversation. We did have one conversation. You did call me the day after and confirm for me exactly what you're saying.
Okay, so we have not, I've been completely transparent with you about that meeting right there the following day. This is what happened. We can even, you can even confirm this with our board president, confirm with our superintendent. This is where we stand. Our program's been running for seventeen years. We are, we have also gotten funding in a different manner from the state. Um, we, we have a program. It's been going on for many, many years. It may not be the exact same program, but we have had a program for quite some time. We're not trying to take anybody else's program. I just want to say that just so it's on the record.
Mr. Faitros, I just want to thank you for your.
Okay, I didn't want to say anything in advance. They want, I didn't want to say anything to cut anybody off or to, to interrupt anybody. I want to say it after everybody said what they said. But these are facts. Since two thousand and five we've had a program. It was free for the first seven years. It's been subsidized by, by the parents since two thousand and twelve in some manner, not completely. That's a, that's a fact. Anybody wants to verify that, they can contact Mr. Scarfield, our superintendent. They can follow it up with the state. These are all facts. And you contact our, our board president, Victoria Bradley. And Mrs. Mrs. uh Gottlieb is in the audience. She can also verify this. We're all in the room. This is exactly what the, told the state monitor. We have not heard back. We've asked for complete transparency. And the following day, I contacted Dr. Martinez. These are all facts.
Mr. Faitros, I know, I know you can't see us, but we're, we're actively trying to agree with you.
Okay.
Mr. Faitros, um trustee Faitros, um trustee Rodriguez. Um, thank you. Thank, thank you for the information and for um. Informing us that Little Ferry has, has had a pre-K program. I just want to add that Little Ferry has had a successful pre-K program for many, many years. A general ed pre-K program and an inclusion pre-K program. And I just want to thank. Thank you for the information and I just want to agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add something? Uh, thank you, Mr. Faitros for clarifying what happened after, but I also want to note that. As a board member, I was not aware that Mr. Egan was making this presentation in Little Ferry until after the fact. So. I think moving forward, it's great that you're being transparent after the fact, but moving forward, I think if he's ever going to present to the Little Ferry Board of Ed. We should know as Ritual Park Board of Ed prior to this happening.
We, we, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't know ourselves. He showed up at the meeting. I didn't know beforehand either. I called Dr. Martinez the very next morning and told him about it. Did I not, Dr. Martinez?
You did, but if I can, if I can just jump in here, um, and not kick a guy while he's down. Mr. Egan has since reached out to me, uh, since that meeting. And assured me that the entire process will be transparent, that it will be mutually beneficial for both districts if it's to go forward. That he's not going to muscle it through. And that uh, he's going to get the two boards together to speak on whether this is a possibility uh, going forward. So I think right now we're all on the same page. Uh, we're going to let the guy heal a little bit and when he comes back. We'll talk about whether this is a good venture for both districts. Otherwise, I'm assuming it's not going to happen. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody, we're going to close public comment. We're closing public comment. So we're going to move on to new business. Faculty and programs, um, Ms. Kraft, can you move that?
Sure, uh, faculty and programs like to move resolution sixteen oh one to sixteen oh three.
Second.
Are there any questions on new business, FP sixteen oh one to sixteen oh three? Seeing none. Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mr. Faitros?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Uh, trustee Gomes, can you uh move finance and insurance?
Yes, um, before I do, I just want to say for seventeen oh one, I'm very happy to see this. I think it'll be a great experience for the students. I move FI seventeen oh one and seventeen oh two.
Second.
Are there any questions on new business, FI seventeen oh one and FI seventeen oh two?
I do have one quick question. On that, the rod grant, uh, how did we find that? Is that something that we've gotten before in the past?
That's something that the state is actually offering and it's a new round of funding. Um, it's offered uh to all districts and it's awarded on a first come, first served basis.
Yeah, thank you.
Did I ask? Okay, seeing no question, no other questions, Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Faitros?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Also new business on personnel, trustee Orth, could you please move that?
I so move eighteen oh one and eighteen oh two.
Second.
Are there any questions on new business, P eighteen oh one and P eighteen oh two? Seeing none. Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Faitros?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to close.
I second.